Hello, excuse me, just a quick announcement, please. For anybody who is wishing to provide testimony, could you please sign up and put the signup sheet in that basket? Thank you.
I bet you know West.
Right. Good evening, everyone. Thanks for being here. Can everybody hear me tonight? I know we had some technical difficulties on the last one, so I want to make sure that everybody can hear me at this point. Sounds like it. Thank you for being here tonight. This is the City of Garden City Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. A special, special meeting Tuesday, July 8th, 2025. Time is 6:30 PM. Confirming audio and video is working correctly.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. So now we'll call the meeting to order. For the record, we have Commissioner Smith, Shepherd, and Brown present with Wild being absent. And we'll go ahead and start with the Budget Allegiance. This commission provides for a public hearing for quasi judicial administrative land use decisions, appeals, and legislative actions specific to land use regulations. The format for the public hearing will follow the procedure as follows. There'll be a presentation by the applicant, city staff report, public testimony, rebuttal testimony from the applicant, a discussion of hearing among the commissioner members, and then the decision. If you wish to give public testimony, there are some general rules to abide by. We'll be sticking strict to these tonight since there are so many of you here, and we want to have an orderly procession. Again, please abide by the rules. So no person shall be permitted to speak at the public hearing until the person is recognized by the chair to do so. The commission will not address those who speak out of order. If you have questions, you may ask them during your turn for public testimony. And the applicant can respond to them during the rebuttal, or the commission can ask questions of staff during their discussion. There are signup sheets at the front, so if you would like to provide testimony, then please sign up. There's also a separate sheet that's called a public hearing spokesperson signup sheet. Looks a little bit different. If you're designating someone as a spokesperson, then please sign up here with this sheet. No person shall be permitted to testify at the public hearing unless such person has signed their full name and written their residential address on the signup sheets. Clearly state your name and address into the microphone at the podium when you're providing testimony. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Chairman, there are no changes.
All right, thank you. Now, there is no items on the consent agenda. And we have item V, the public hearing, which is the action item, which is the only item on the agenda tonight. The agenda item that we'll be discussing is the public hearing action item, S U B F Y two zero two five dash zero 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 two. State side subdivision, River Club, River, River Club Town Homes Combined Preliminary and Final Platte. Jeremy Wright with Brighton Development, Inc. is requesting a 134 residential lot subdivision with six common lots. The property is currently located at six five one five West State Street, Ada County, in the SAPD zero one zoning district. So before we begin, I would just like to make a couple of comments. I know that this is a very important topic to you all, as you can see from the amount of people here. We have received over 200 public comments. We've reviewed those. Those have been added to the record. And there are many items within those documents that we have, that we are, that we have knowledge about and that we understand that you are concerned with. As a reminder, this is not an approval for this special area plan. This has been approved by city council already. This is for one part of that development, and as such will be limited accordingly. Also, we are aware of the pending legal matter, which the city's council attorney has addressed to this body specifically. And as a reminder, this commission is a recommending body to city council. That's it. We are not going to be the ones making the approval, just a recommendation to that city council body. So with that, we will turn it over to the applicant to begin with the presentation. Sure. So if there's anyone that would like to have a seat that does not have so now, there is a room that's available upstairs. We would like to understand whether or not the folks upstairs are going to be providing public testimony. If you don't want to have public testimony and you just want a place to watch, you're more than welcome to go up there. There are seats. Before we do have the public testimony, we will make sure that there's no one up there that's not being aware of taking public testimony. So that you'll have your opportunity, but just for the sake of comfort, this could be a long night. So if you want a seat, feel free to go up there.
I've, thank you, Chairman. And just for clarification, there is not enough seats up there for everyone. There's probably 10 to 15 seats up there, but there is, Zoom is up, so you can hear what's going on downstairs. And another point of clarification, if you do happen to be up there, we have some reserved seating, so we can call you ahead of time and have you work your way down here to be prepared to provide testimony in a timely manner.
Thank you. And we'll be using a timer for any public that wants to provide testimony that will be limited to three minutes, and a representative will be limited to 15 minutes. So we'll use that once we do get the public testimony. So. All right, thank you.
Commissioners, good evening. My name is John Wardle. My address is 2929 West Navigator Drive. I'm already in Idaho, eight three six four two. I'm glad that we have technology working tonight, so we could do this with everybody present. Wanted to just kind of frame the project before you tonight, the way I'm going to handle some of our comments tonight. Discuss very briefly prior, prior actions in the East Subdistrict, the application that's in front of you tonight, as well as the staff report, three key points on access sidewalks and pathways and landscape standards, and then open up to any questions you might have based on our presentation. So previously, the City Planning and Zoning Commission and City Council approved the River Club SAP. That was done, that, and also rezone 22.86 acres from R2 to a specific area of planned development. There was a development agreement. There was an SAP ordinance, also zoning ordinance. Subsequently, there's been a minor land division and a record of survey. We held a public neighborhood meeting the end of November, and we also did design review on May, in May 2025. The East Subdistrict is just one of three areas that were included and approved with the SAP. The area that we're talking about would be the right here, the yellow screen here is the East Subdistrict, which is before you tonight. The SAP required that each subdistrict bring back a master plan for that. And part of the master plan is the plotting process, which we're bringing for, before you tonight. Originally, the SAP approved for the East Subdistrict up to 35 units per acre, 180 to 200 units, 45 to 60 townhomes for a total of 260 units potentially. Our proposal tonight, and part of the application's been presented, is for 134 townhomes. Three stories completely across the board. It's a 63% decrease in density, removing 200 apartment units from the project. These would all be for sale, platted lots. Overall, there's 126 unit decrease of our proposal. Just a quick reference from the SAP versus what we're showing. There was the potential for, you know, up to five story apartment building on this parcel as well. And we are proposing, like you can see on the right side, all three story townhomes. This takes also the context of where this project is in relationship to the golf course and surrounding neighborhoods. This has just a conceptual of the golf course and what is going to be rebuilt here later. We'll start later this year, early next year. And this just shows the context of the golf course and the SAP areas. And then also one more picture with this right arrow to the left, that would be the East Subdistrict in context, looking towards the south and towards the river. Again, we're proposing 134 townhomes on 10.27 acres. We would all be below 35 feet. There was a proposal that said there was a 35 feet, 35 foot max height line, and our entire project would be less than 35 feet, about 13 units per acre, and there'd be no multifamily. So related to the staff report, the applications we have before you are preliminary final plat. The app, the draft findings state that the application, for the most part, is complying with the applicable sections of code. And like I said, the three issues we wanted to cover tonight were access sidewalks and pathways, and then the landscape standards. This shows the preliminary plat and also shows the building footprints. The buildings are configured in three and four units. Like I said, these would all be for sale. They all have two car garages included. Overall, we have 352 parking spaces, 268 of those would be enclosed. And then there's also guest parking throughout the state side River Club Town Home project. This shows where the additional parking areas are within the community. Like I said, there's additional 84 guest parking stalls throughout the neighborhood. As we went through design review, we did go over the design of the buildings. We are maximum height of 35 feet across all of our buildings. There's extensive pathways and sidewalks throughout the community. And each home will have two car garages plus additional guest parking. And this is just a quick look at the homes that we're proposing. So one of the major items that staff had identified was access. I'll get into the details here. We are served by private street coming in off of State Street, which is called River Club Drive. That will separate the East Subdistrict on the right from the central subdistrict on the left. And then the rest of our project will be served by common drives. The SAP, the River Club SAP defines the common drive as a shared access that serves two or more parcels or uses or dwelling units. And also another definition within the SAP is a travel surface that provides internal circulation within a site, and they have the potential to provide access to adjacent parcels. So that's the configuration of how we are serving each of these homes in the community with these common drives, which effectively are alleys, but they're designated as common drives and will have a common lot. The purple, as I said, would be the common drives. The orange is the private street coming in off of State Street, and State Street is the east-west mobility corridor, our trailer roadway system. For an example, you know, we, we wanted to give you a real context of what we are proposing. We did a project very similar to this in East Boise called Park Place, a barber station. Very similar. These are all three story townhomes. They all for sale. They each have two car garages. As you can see, there are pathways and sidewalks on the front doors of each of these with a shared common drive alley between each of the back of those homes. Common drives are pretty common, pun intended, in Garden City. You use them very extensively. Here's a couple of examples that have improved, have been approved recently. A Shen Dig subdivision, which 95 homes, Coffee, which had 82, and then Mod Court, which had 22. These are all examples of common driveways which have been used within other applications in the city. There, there's one other element that we wanted to address, and that was the question regarding parking areas. Staff had noted that we could not comply with this forward motion. And what we found was the, the SAP code, which was referenced, is actually identical to the Garden City code. Garden City code is highlighted in blue. The SAP code is highlighted in red below. And these are exact, exactly the same with the addition of both motor vehicles in Garden City's code. If you carry this forward, Garden City would not be able to approve any subdivisions with homes, with garages, being single family attached or detached, without complying with this. We believe that this has been misapplied in this case. It really relates to a parking lot, parking area that would back into a street or a private street and was not intended for garages for single family homes. Otherwise, any subdivision you have could not comply with this. So for example, here's two examples. Mountain View Subdivision, you have 58 lots behind the Fred Meyer. These all have garages, and they back into a street. River Path, the same way, all these homes back into a street. And so if this was applied to garages, these projects, or any project with a garage, would not be able to comply unless they were able to enter and leave in a forward motion or turn around within the garage and pull out forward. So we believe this has been misapplied and only applies to parking lots. Like I mentioned, this shows all of the common drives. We're asking that the commission remove from the approved, or from the staff report that's in front of you, the reference to parking area, because we believe this does not apply to single family and townhomes within the SAP and the Garden City code. Sidewalks and pathways. We wanted to show the extensive sidewalks and pathways. It may be a little fake here, but the green areas are where we have five foot sidewalks. The tent, or the blue areas are 10 foot pathways, both on State Street and along the golf course. And then we have common drive crossings throughout as well. All the garages are accessed from the common drives, and the homes are accessed from sidewalks along the front of the homes, just like we've done out at Barber Station, and very similar to other projects throughout Garden City. Of note, we have 4,500 lineal feet of five foot sidewalks and 1,600 lineal feet of 10 foot pathways. So in all, we have about 1.15 miles of new sidewalks and pathways within the state side subdivision. And we'd like the commission to also remove, reference to, does not meet the sidewalk standards, because clearly we are providing sufficient sidewalks to every front door and throughout the project. And this just kind of gives in context both sidewalks, drives, and private streets throughout. Landscaping, there's really kind of four issues on landscaping we wanted to bring to your attention. The southern boundary, landscape islands, gravity irrigation, and then treat mitigation. There's a reference in the staff report that the standard is that you have a six foot by six foot hedge along adjoining properties. In this area that's highlighted in red is really where we are asking for this condition to be waived. Everything to the south or to the bottom of that is the golf course. We are directly adjacent to and front of the golf course. We have a 10 foot pathway there, and we feel like that requirement, while it is a standard that it doesn't relate, because we are all opening up to golf course, and it is opening up to open space there. So there is no, there should not be a requirement for continuous six foot tall vegetative screen, as noted there in red. There's also a note in the staff report about the requirement to plant trees in islands throughout. We are not trying to not plant trees. In fact, we actually are planting a lot of trees with this project. But I've highlighted here the green areas where we can't comply, because you can see the dashed red line on each side of that. That is a gravity irrigation line. And while we can plant shrubs and bushes, we can't plant any trees in those locations. So we're asking that that requirement be removed, although we can still qualify and meet all the tree requirements for the project. There's also a discussion regarding gravity irrigation. In this exhibit, we are showing where we will be piping or tiling the gravity irrigation line. We pick it up on the east boundary and will be tiled in purple, to the point in red where it shows a sewer manhole. We need to cross over the top of the sewer manhole with a closed pipe and not open water. And then once we clear that point, it will open back up into an open water amenity throughout the golf course. And so that's showing you where that piping would occur, and we're asking for that to be approved as designed. And finally, there was extensive review of our trees on site. There are, you know, with the, the change of the golf course, also removing trees. We did go through and do a tree survey. We have identified trees that will be removed, what the mitigation requirements are, and we actually are exceeding the requirements for mitigation. And so I just wanted to note that, that we have met the requirements and exceeded the requirements for tree mitigation. Couple more here. Planning plan in front of you is in the application. Also, the overall common area, we have 21% qualified open space within state side subdivision, which is significantly above what the requirement would be with the normal subdivision of 10%. And finally, this shows an example, the typical housing planting plan. We will be planting all of the units as we develop those. They won't be left up to the homeowners to do. Also, the HOA will be maintaining, the HOA of this project will be maintaining all of the planting. And so I just wanted to confirm that planting that's required will be done at the same time that we build the homes in that process. So in conclusion, state side subdivision does comply with the residents at River Club's specific area plan. We specifically addressed within our application and within our narrative tonight, access through the project, sidewalks and connections, and landscaping. We concur with the staff side of conditions of approval and findings of fact with the request of clarifications, modifications, which were handed out to you, which noted those changes which I've discussed this evening. So we requested the commission recommend approval to the city council so that they can make the final decision on this of state side subdivision, the combined preliminary and final plats. And Sam, for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions from the applicant?
I don't have any at this time.
Any questions?
Because I'm not great at reading this tiny map. How many, how many access points are there? How many ways in and out?
It's a great question. We have, at the moment, one access, which would be on the left of your sheet there. Let me get to this.
Thank you.
This exhibit's fine. So coming off of State Street, we have an access coming down, which is called River Club Drive. It's a private street. We will have an access that would go to, let me actually just go back to the beginning up here. So where it says project, where the yellow line is on that exhibit, going north, that's River Club Drive, which we'd go out to State Street.
That green line there?
Yes, the green yellow line in the middle next to the word project. We will have access through the central subdistrict shown there in the middle. And we'll go out to Pierce Park as well. That will be in the near term, it'll be temporary. In the long term, as that site gets developed, it will be a permanent access. And then we don't have any other access through the project. There was extensive conversations at both Plan Zoning Commission and the city council regarding access to roads that abutted the project. And it was clear and also required that no access be given to the, which would be Fair Oaks. That would be the only access point that we would have. But we're holding that out as just a emergency access. We will have a fence and a gate across there. So emergency services could get through if they needed to. But our access points will be up to River Club Drive or over to Pierce Park.
Okay, so at no point in future development will it be a through road. It'll always be in one way, out the same way.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I'll turn the presentation over to staff, Ms. Veal. And I'll turn the presentation over to staff, Ms. Veale.
Hey, good evening, Chairman and Commissioners. This presentation addresses the combined preliminary and final plot application for the state side subdivision. It is known as file number SUBFY two thousand twenty-five dash zero 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 two. It is submitted by the Brighton Development Company and the proposed development encompasses ten point two eight acres at six five one five West State Street. And it includes a hundred thirty-four residential lots as well as six common lots. This yields a net density of approximately thirteen dwelling units per acre. The site is located within the east subdistrict of the River Club specific area plan known as SAPD. And the and it is subject to the provisions of Garden City Code Title Eight, Chapter Eight, A. There is currently an active declaratory judgment action in the Ada County District Court regarding the application or of the applicability, sorry, of the nineteen seventy-eight plantation master CCNRs. While this legal matter does not preclude the city from proceeding under Idaho Code, the commission may defer its action if it determines that the court's ruling could affect the application standards of the current subdivision.
Right now it'll be fine. Yeah, I've got the Zoom call going. Yeah, no, that's okay. Take her out. Go.
We have received Agent
Get it. Oh, you're gonna go party. Why didn't you go? Eddie was right here. What happened? Okay, here she comes.
We can't hear you.
So building on that context, the current proposal presents a similar configuration that raises the same concerns regarding vehicular movement and street classification. The applicant's site plan proposes a network of internal private streets as identified in the submitted Ada County Street Name Review document. These streets serve as the only vehicular access to the proposed residential units. The configuration of garages and surface parking spaces entails that vehicles reverse into these private streets, thereby violating the forward motion ingress and egress requirement. While the applicant argues that these accessways should be classified as alleys under Garden City Code eight dash eight A dash four A dash two, staff finds this interpretation inconsistent with both the code and the functional characteristics of the site. The definition of an alley under Garden City Code is a quote, minor street providing secondary access at the rear or side of a parcel that otherwise abuts a street, end quote. In this case, the parcel in question do not abut any other streets, at least for access. And the internal roadways function as the primary means of ingress and egress. Therefore, they cannot be considered alleys. Furthermore, the applicant's statement that pedestrian pathways constitute the primary access is not supported by the practical use of the site. Pedestrian access is predominantly only available after a vehicle has been parked, reinforcing the conclusion that the vehicular accessways are the primary access routes. Staff has evaluated whether these roadways could be classified as a common drive or common driveway. And while the roadways could meet the definition of what a common driveway is per the SAP code, there is a larger conversation that needs to be had upon that classification. For example, using the terms ordinary meaning as defined by the Merriam-Webster's dictionary, a driveway is defined as a private road giving access from a public way to a building on a budding grounds. A common driveway therefore is typically understood as a shared accessway serving a limited number of units and not in a full internal circulation. The distinction between a private street and a common driveway is both functional and regulatory. A private street is a broader access facility, often maintained by an HOA, and it is subject to full street design standards. A common driveway is narrower in scope, typically serving fewer units and is not intended for general circulation. In this case, the internal roadways clearly function as a private street. As such, they are subject to the forward motion access requirements. The current design, which requires vehicles to reverse into the streets, is not compliant. The second aspect of this classification issue involves the administrative process under which the application has been reviewed. To date, the application has been processed and publicly noticed as a standard subdivision. However, in the internal, if the internal roadways were to be reclassified as common driveways, the application would need to be submitted as a planned unit development. This is because the SAP code defers to Garden City Code eight five A, which limits common driveways to serve no more than four dwelling units off of a common drive unless otherwise approved through PUD or Planned Unit Development. Through all this interpretation, it is important to note that the previously approved conceptual master plan, while it is informative, it is not regulatory. In the event that there is conflict between the master plan and the SAP code, the code will prevail. Although the design review consultants did not comment directly on the issue of the driveways or private streets, they did suggest that the CCNRs of the subdivision could include a reverse in-parking requirement. While this may mitigate some operational concerns, it does not resolve the underlying code issues. So in conclusion, unless the commission determines that the internal roadways qualify as common drives, the current design fails to meet the requirements of Garden City Code eight dash eight A dash three D dash three A six A. Staff recommends that the commission consider this issue carefully in its deliberations and provide a clear interpretation to guide both this and future applications. Kind of switching subjects, but they're all related. There is a sidewalk compliance issue. So another area of this of non-compliance in the application pertains to the pedestrian infrastructure, specifically the absence of detached sidewalks along the internal streets as required by Garden City Code eight dash eight A dash three E six. Under the SAP code, both alleys and private roads are classified as streets. Consequently, the sidewalk requirements outlined in code apply uniformly, regardless of whether the roadway is designated as an alley or a private road. Detached sidewalks are explicitly required to provide space for landscaping and street tree buffers. While the standard sidewalk width is typically greater, the code does allow for a reduced width of four feet when located next to a private right-of-way. In the proposed development, sidewalks are generally not provided along the internal street network. There is a detached sidewalk present along North River Club Lane and a portion of West Stableford Lane. However, no sidewalks are provided along West Greenside, North Nausu, sorry if I mispronounced that, North Dogleg and West Scramble. Instead, the applicant has proposed a network of internal pedestrian pathways that connect common landscaped areas in the front of the entrances of individual buildings. The applicant contends that this internal pathway system fulfills the intent of code, which requires a pedestrian circulation system that connects street sidewalks to primary building entrances and links the adjacent properties, transit stops or future transit stops, trails, plazas, open space areas. While staff acknowledges that the internal pathway system may support internal pedestrian circulation, it does not technically satisfy the explicit requirement for detached sidewalks along streets. The code does not provide an exemption from sidewalk requirements based on the presence of internal pathways. Therefore, the current design does not comply with the applicable sidewalk standards. In reviewing the landscape requirements for the development, staff has encountered an ambiguity in determining the appropriate frontage for the proposed or for the purpose of applying class one tree plantings. The site design includes both a pedestrian pathway and a vehicular right-of-way, each of which could reasonably be interpreted as the primary access. As the code ties frontage and thus tree planting requirements to the primary access, a clear determination is necessary to ensure the consistent application of these standards. Historically, staff has interpreted the front setback for townhome style developments to align with the location of the primary pedestrian access. This interpretation has been consistently applied during building permit reviews and is typically documented in the project's decision documents to ensure that there is clarity and consistency throughout the duration of that project. Staff is therefore requesting that the Planning and Zoning Commission provide a formal interpretation identifying which access could be considered the frontage in this context. The decision will provide a clear direction for this application as well as future development within the SAP district with similar configurations. Staff has already drafted a condition of approval to read, quote, "The frontage shall be measured along the side of the structure that serves as the primary access point." If a pedestrian pathway is designated as the primary access, the frontage shall be measured along that pathway. And the class one tree shall be planted within the corresponding setback of that frontage. With that being said, staff did look at the, I'll call them the new landscape plans because they were submitted at the beginning of June. And what I was able to analyze was code compliant with the conditions as drafted in your decision document. So technically, they are code compliant with that interpretation. So in conclusion, staff has not issued a formal recommendation due to the interpretive nature of the access or roadway classification. Instead, I present the following options for the commission to consider. Option one, or A, whatever you want to call it, that if the commission determines that the internal roadway qualifies as a common driveway, the commission can continue the application to a date not determined. So that way, the applicant can apply for a planned unit development application. The application will need to be re-noticed, but as a but as a planned unit development, the applicant can't, the applicant can submit code adjustment requests regarding the perimeter landscaping for other noncompliant issues as well as requesting for the roadway to be determined as a common drive, so vehicles can reverse out onto the common drive. Another option is if the commission determines that the internal roadways qualify as, again, common drive, the applicant can choose to withdraw the app- application and reapply under the new ordinance ten fifty-six twenty-five being applicable, which eliminates their need for a planned unit development because common driveways are no longer limited to four dwelling units being accessed off of them. If the commission determines the internal roadways are private streets, the commission can consider a denial recommendation for noncompliance with access and landscaping standards. Or if further deliberation is required, given all the information tonight, um, the commission can keep the hearing open to ensure procedural compliance and continue the hearing to the date certain of either July sixteenth, two thousand twenty-five, which is in just a week, or August twentieth, twenty twenty-five. Should the commission choose to make a decision tonight, staff recommends that the formal written decision be finalized at the July sixteenth meeting to ensure accuracy and completeness. That'll stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Veal. Questions for staff? Commissioner Smith?
So looking at those options, if we were to classify the internal roads as streets, we could also determine that subsection six parking area access requirements only apply to parking lots and not to driveways, correct?
Um, Commissioner, yes, that could also be a interpretation. Um, if the commission decides that is your interpretation, then it would be applied to all development in the SAP district.
Okay, and the, well, and it'd actually be beyond that because the same language exists outside that, the SAP, S A P D, S A P D area, correct? So it would, it'd actually be a larger interpretation.
Yeah, it, it could be, or you could specify that it's only applied to the SAPD.
Okay, and, and on the PUD applications that you mentioned, I know the applicant and, and you both said that there were prior, that this issue of the backing and, and whatnot had come up in PUD applications, in those applications that, in any of them that you can remember, was the backing out a, a adjustment, a requested adjustment by the applicant? Or was that simply the interpretation that the commission or the council applied outside of a specific request for an adjustment?
Yeah, Commissioner, it was not specifically requested as like a code deviation, uh, nor was it discussed, I think, in the simple fact that we had already changed the road to be a common drive and therefore code didn't really get picked up on or highlighted.
Okay.
As opposed to it saying street.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Brown, Chairman, I have a couple of questions from Ms. Veal. Let's still talk about this issue of the forward driving into a street. I would request that you address Mr. Wardle's statement to the effect that if we applied this to any other similar situation, whether it's in SAP area or in general, how would we approve what many of the houses that most of us live in, that how would they be approved unless they were so large as you could have a turnaround on the lot?
Commissioner Brown, that, that is a great question. Um, they, in taking it on a technical review standpoint, they would have to have some kind of turnaround. Um, or take access off of a common drive.
Thank you. I have another question. Commissioner Brown, Chairman. Uh, this has to do with the requirement that's in the code, and I've read it many times, with regard to detached sidewalks. Is it your understanding that we would have the power to recommend waiver of that if we were of the opinion that the pathway plan that they put forward, which will be servicing the front of these house, what they characterize as the front of these house, as being sufficient?
Uh, Commissioner Brown, there, there isn't necessarily a loophole or a waiver ability within a subdivision application, which, which this is. Um, so the sidewalk standards set forth in SAP code are what is required. Um, and there wouldn't really be any maneuverability in that interpretation.
Thank you. Commissioner Shepard?
Thank you, um, Mr. Chair. Hannah, thank you for your presentation. I appreciate that. Those colored boxes are very helpful. Um, I, maybe this touches a little bit on Commissioner Brown's question about like how anyone could turn around inside of a garage or something. And what I'm thinking is like most when you pull in forward to a garage, usually there's like a driveway or some kind of buffer. And I think there's like, in code, isn't there like a, a setback to a garage that would allow you to back out into the driveway, be able to see, and, and then back out into a street? Whereas in this application, it almost looks like you're just backing right out into the street. Is that kind of what we're looking at here is the issue?
Yes, Commissioner Shepard, I think the, the bigger issue is the safety uh, behind having such a long roadway and having all these garages back out immediately onto that roadway without any kind of internal sidewalk or landscape buffer to help with that, we call it a clear vision triangle. Um, we do have areas in code where, um, it is required to have a fu- twenty-foot driveway prior, like between the garage and the sidewalk or and the property line and the, the road to help create that buffer. So at least your, your nose and your windshield is out of the garage enough to where you can see what's actually coming down the road at the same time as you.
Am I correct in my understanding that there's no space for this? Based on like the outlines that I looked at? And I, I know that there's a lot of information in here, so there's probably like something that says like how many feet is there is, but are these, maybe this is a question for the developer, but is this like a two-way street or is this like a roadway? Is this like a left-way that just goes through? I'm trying to understand.
Commissioner Shepard, that, that might be a better question for the applicant, but the way I'm understanding it, it is a two-way street. There are conditions that have been drafted to require, um, certain like safety precautions in trying to calm traffic, whether it is landscaping or we see like speed bumps or raised pedestrian crossings, just to help make sure that people aren't going excessive speed limits, uh, or speeds within that, um, street or common drive, whatever it gets to be determined. Uh, but, uh, again, I'm assuming it's a two-way road, not a single one-way.
Good, thank you.
Any other follow-up questions for Ms. Veal? Commissioner Smith?
I have one quickly, um, Ms. Veal, looking again at that, and wish you could project it, but looking at that parking area access requirements, that's where the no backing up appears. And there's three subsections, A, B, and C. A is the one that we've been talking about. You can't back up. You can't go straight. You pretty much need like a clue mansion, you know, circle. But then looking at subsection C, it references access driveways for parking areas. How do you interpret that in, in this analysis? Because it seems like if a parking area is a driveway, then it wouldn't make sense that we're talking about access driveways to driveways, unless you have double driveways.
Yes.
You, you know what I mean?
Yes, um, I, yeah, um, I mean, I could only say that I classified the garage as a parking area. And if it had a driveway, then it would be a, what, what is it, parking access or access drive?
I see.
I don't have that.
Okay, so you're looking at the parking area as the garage and the access driveway is the driveway?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Veal, in that situation, how would the street classification impact the application?
In?
So?
In that scenario?
Yes.
If there was a driveway?
Mm-hmm.
If there was a driveway? I, I, if it's a street, you can't reverse back out onto a street. So I think that's where the, the hiccup is still.
Gotcha. Um, and then, so if you were to designate it as parking areas, which the, you would say the parking area is different than the private drive, um, there would still be the issue on classified as a street if it's a private street for the detached sidewalks with landscaping, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Veal? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it. So at this time, we will begin the public testimony. And so, um, before we start, I would like just to get a better understanding of just account for those that are in favor of the application versus those who are not. So can I see, we'll, we'll do a count of all of those that are in favor of the application? And, uh, Jen and staff, can you take that count, please?
This is your exercise of the day.
Ms. Thornborough, are, are we close to having the record?
Chairman, members of the commission, our counts missed. There are a couple of people that have two hands raised. Um, but, uh, I think a rough estimate is about a hundred and five, although it might be a few people more based on which count you take.
All right, thank you. And then?
I, I would like to note that there are still some people upstairs. I can run upstairs and see if there's any up there.
Yeah, that works. And then Hannah, would you be able just to count those that are opposed to it down here? So we're, so all of those that are opposed, can you please stand or raise your hand? Well, okay. All right, and while Hannah is doing that, so just to make sure that we have all of the public testimony, is there anybody else that would like to testify that hasn't signed up? All right, um, so what we'll do first is we have two individuals that have been identified as spokesperson. Uh, the first is, uh, David Leroy, so we'll get ready for you once we have, um, Ms. Thornborough that comes back down. And then it looks like Dan Holler. All right, it looks like you'll be given six minutes, uh, since you have one other person that's offering you their time. And then we'll get into the public testimony, so, um, Mr. Leroy, I don't know how to change this to fifteen minutes, so I'm going to put you on my clock if that's okay? And then, um,
I'm gonna take how much time, Mr.?
All right, thanks, sir. And then we'll get into the other public testimony as well. Do you take the roll on who is opposing it? There, is there anybody up there?
Chairman, uh, so I can speak into the microphone and get this on the record. Uh, there is one person in support upstairs and none in opposition. And then I believe it sounds like online, there were two people that raised their hand in support.
Okay. Mr. Leroy, I'll turn over the mic to you again if you could state your name and address for the record, and I'll give you fifteen minutes.
Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, distinguished staff, I'm David Leroy, attorney of law, PO Box one ninety-three Boise, eight three seven oh one. Uh, I represent a group of neighbors that are most proximate to this development and therefore most affected by this development. Uh, they are neighbors who only seek to have the issues here precisely examined. And they ask that the procedures, which are most appropriate here, be precisely followed. Uh, I want to note that we do appreciate Brighton's efforts to reduce density and make other adjustments in this particular proposal. Uh, but I do make two important points, I hope, tonight. Uh, number one, the state side subdivision should be very precisely measured to be exactly consistent with Garden City Code and most especially that special area of, uh, the SAP of two thousand three zero zero one. Uh, and, uh, in that regard, we think there's some work to do. And secondly, the best procedure for complying with all of the requirements and the city's own mandates, in fact, about, uh, compatibility with existing neighborhoods, uh, is available to this commission and to the city to minimize conflict by result, requiring a maximum consultation between the developer and the neighborhood uh, in a process, uh, which has been historically used, working with the CCNRs, the homeowners association. Uh, Brighton, in this particular, has not made that most appropriate and we believe required consultation. Uh, I initially filed a letter of protest on behalf of my clients on March fourteenth, which is in the record. We've also put into the record the pleadings, uh, in a, a district court case, and it's for judicial district, uh, relating to the second issue that I mentioned. Let me speak to the first. Now, Mr. Chairman, your resident citizens are expressing some concise and I think particular and appropriate concerns about whether this particular development is consistent with the SAP and the Garden City ordinances generally. Uh, we are concerned and remain concerned about the North Fair Oaks access in its current configuration, but most particularly in a future iteration. Uh, we acknowledge that the six-foot-tall vinyl fence on a rotating and locked gate uh, does offer, uh, apparently the initial promise of precluding, uh, general public access. But we're concerned about the fact that the end of that fence is quite proximate to North Fair Oaks. Uh, and we remain concerned that that, uh, may somehow be lost or the specific requirement of the council and the SAP that there not be any pedestrian bicycle vehicular access to North Fair Oaks uh, may, may and must be defended. Uh, secondly, the density reduction is, as I will suggest to you in a minute, uh, comes at some cost. The density reduction has been achieved by eliminating larger buildings on the north side of the development. Has been achieved by eliminating larger buildings on the north side of the development. And exchanging that for, uh, the semi circle. Of townhomes on the. Uh, south perimeter of the development, most proximate to the neighborhoods. And that array of the lower density so-called. Is what's creating these issues with regard to. Backing and alleys and driveways and. Uh, and, uh, sidewalks. And pathways and those same issues that are of concern internally. End up being of concern immediately against the golf course as well. And that golf course, of course, is immediately against. Uh, the neighbors where the development itself is not immediately proximate to the neighbors. Uh, we. Are concerned about the buffering. And, uh, in particular, that parking lot that is. Immediately adjacent to, to the south end, the North Fair Oaks and the houses in that neighborhood. We remain concerned about the height restrictions. I acknowledge that. Brighton suggested that, uh, they will build no taller than thirty-five feet. But if that thirty-five feet is on top of a three-foot pad. Uh, is that building still meeting the thirty-five foot requirement? We invite a dialogue, uh, as to that. And finally, I'll mention, uh, although my clients may mention others, and so may the other neighbors. Uh, generally affected. Uh, the FEMA flooding potential remains of concern. Whole eleven where this development, uh, will be going in. Uh, is an area in the springtime, which generally is flooded by runoff and snow melt. Uh, we remain concerned and have not heard, uh, any dialogue, uh, as to that particular aspect. Uh, thus, uh, we ask that you please. Pay careful attention, not only to the staff issues as mentioned. But also to these that are in the record as the neighbor's concerns. Uh, my concerns on behalf of my clients and the other neighbors similarly affected, uh, adjacent to the property. Uh, second. Because you now face a subdivision application. Uh, I call your attention to the fact that. You need to more precisely consider than was the case in the SAP. Whether or not the existing CCNRs, the master plan for the plantation subdivision. Uh, is applicable and should be considered at this stage of the development. Uh, when we appeared in the SAP, we were told. Improper, we think, but with great conviction by the city attorney and others. That the CCNRs applicable to this mass of land. Was just a private matter in terms of the zoning consideration. We are beyond the zoning consideration now into specific building applications. And we urge to you that there is a proper role. For this commission and a proper time now for this commission. To consider inputting and requiring Brighton to input. A, a consultation with the HOA on the existing CCNRs that affect that land. Uh, if my clients, uh, choose to paint their house purple. Or my clients choose to build a shed immediately adjacent to, to a neighbor or to a golf course hole. Uh, they must go to the homeowners association, be referred to the architectural and environmental committee. Uh, and make a presentation that views that presentation. Against the existing CCNRs or in the alternative. Uh, finds a supplemental, uh, adjustment to the CCNRs that's appropriate to that development. Uh, we believe that's appropriate and import. Or the developer at this point. Uh, to make that connection. Your own staff's report, uh, as to the legal context. Uh, observes upon that. And as I understand, uh, Ms. Veal, she said the rhetorical question as to whether or not you should be serious about that was. Could court action affect the application? And the obvious answer to that is yes. Uh, now. Or tomorrow, or in the future, or even yesterday, the answer is absolutely, absolutely yes. As to those CCNRs on that particular piece of land, uh, that you're considering. Uh, thus I would suggest, uh. And make, uh, four points, uh, as I move toward my conclusion. Uh, Brighton, in effect, is building. A hundred and thirty-four. Uh, maybe they're purple painted, uh, residences, maybe they're not. But they have not made any approach, uh, to the HOA as to the CCNR. It would be, uh, four points, uh, I would urge of these. Number one, there are many advantages. To this commission and to the neighborhood. If we would merely. Maximize the number of contacts that we have between the developer and the HOA at the earliest possible moment. And this is exactly the right time for that, uh, as the litigation. Uh, is pending, it's advanced, there's a complaint, there's an answer. Uh, the judge has already issued two orders and he has a scheduling conference set for July the fourteenth. Uh, number two, the HOA's own attorney. Uh, Brittany Bones in June of twenty twenty-three. Said in her conclusion, they have offered it to the HOA as its position then. That the A E C C review process is triggered, that's her word, triggered. When specific. Uh, building approvals are sought and submitted. I would also suggest that. Historically. Fifteen out of seventeen times when there have been developments. On the plantation subdivision properties, including incursions into the golf course. Uh, there have been interaction between those developers. And the A E C C and the HOA. Uh, some of you, most of you, the majority of you on the commission. May remember that, uh, map that the land group. Uh, prepared in the proceedings, uh, before the SAP. That in different colors, but with all of the meets and bounds. Of the, uh, golf course then remaining and subdivisions adjacent. Uh, listed and described back to nineteen seventy-eight. Those areas where, and, uh, subdivisions have been created from the general property. Uh, it's possible to take that map. And pair. A two-page, uh, diagram, which we're doing in this litigation and will submit. And list each of those years. That each of those subdivisions, uh, was, uh, developed. Identifying each of the developers, identifying each of the owners. And noting from the records and testimony. Whether there was an A E C C approval. Of those developments, uh, from nineteen seventy-eight onward. Seventeen times. That process has been invoked. Seventeen times, uh, there have been issues with development. And the A E C C and fifteen of those times. All of the agreements. You can see there has been that interaction. Only these last two in twenty twenty-four, twenty-five. With Glass Island and now stateside, has that process not been involved? So again, Mr. Chairman, in conclusion, I would simply ask that you pay. Very close attention to the finite details. Uh, where there may still be open questions or inconsistencies. Uh, between the details of the subdivision and the SAP particularly. Uh, as to my clients and the neighbors in the south. And secondly, I would urge that you should not yet. Approve, although continue to work on and refine. This development request. But suggested the developer that he immediately tomorrow. Contact the HOA and go through the A E C C process, as was done fifteen out of seventeen times. When previous commissions and previous council considered this process all the way back to nineteen seventy-eight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Leroy. Uh, next up, we have. Dan Holler. Let me reset my timer for you, Mr. Holler.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
And again, you'll have six minutes and then for the record, state your name and address, please.
Mr. Chairman, listeners, staff, my name is Dan Holler and I reside at sixty-two fifty-four North Fair Oaks Place in Boise, Garden City, Idaho, eight three seven zero three. And thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I'm here to voice my strong opposition to the proposed townhome project on the former plantation golf course property. There are a number of important planning, legal and procedural issues. I urge you to consider before recommending approval of this project. First and foremost, as, uh, Mr. Leroy indicated, uh, there's a, a legal development. That directly affects the land in question, specifically on July second, twenty twenty-five, that's last week. The fourth judicial district court issued a protective order. In eighty county court case number C V zero one dash twenty-four. One eight eight two zero. In this case seeks a declaratory judgment. On whether the plantation master declaration, a recorded legal document. Places enforceable restrictions on the use of this land, including potential limitations on residential development. In its order, the court halted all discovery and noted that the case likely hinges on interpreting. The plain language of the plantation master declaration document already in the court record. Unless ambiguity is found, the court expects to resolve this matter based on existing pleadings. A scheduling conference is set for July fourteenth. The same day, this project is to be scheduled to go before Garden City Council for final approval. It would be premature and potentially problematic to advance this project before the court has issued a ruling. The legal question whether this property is governed by binding covenants remains unresolved. And the outcome could significantly affect the project's legality. I urge the commission to consider postponing. Any recommendation until the court has clarified these legal obligations. Approving the project now could entangle the city of Garden City in a legal and financial quagmire. Second, I want to reiterate the community and planning concerns that many of us have raised throughout this process. The proposed project fundamentally violates the spirit and character of the plantation neighborhood. For over fifty years, the golf course has served as a defining open space amenity. One that was promised to homeowners when they invested in their properties, in which has long served the broader community as a natural buffer and recreational resource. The scale and density of the proposed townhomes are incompatible with the surrounding single-family residential areas. The project significantly reduces open space, increases traffic and places strain on existing infrastructure. The developer's site plan raises serious questions about compliance with height restrictions. As documented in the twenty twenty-three specific area plan. And the associated development agreement. One portion of that agreement appears to limit structure height to thirty-five feet. South of a specific boundary line, yet the current plan may exceed that, especially with added elevation and grading changes. This potential violation warrants further review. In addition to these concerns, I want to highlight two critical infrastructure and safety issues. Flooding portions of the proposed project area are located within flood-prone zones. Neighbors have repeatedly voiced concerns about. How development and grading in this area could worsen flooding impacts on surrounding properties and streets. This risk must be thoroughly studied and mitigated before any approval is granted. Furthermore, the plan ignores critical stormwater management responsibilities. It offers no bioretention basins or drainage swales. And the permeable paver solution contradicts both the twenty twenty-two geotechnical study. And the North Ada County Fire and Rescue's own safety requirements. Fire apparatus access roads must support seventy-five thousand pound vehicles on concrete. Or asphalt, not porous pavers. Construction and long-term access residents are also very concerned about construction traffic and equipment. Accessing the project site via West Plantation Lane. And North Fair Oaks Place. Streets that are residential and not designed to handle the scale of construction vehicle, vehicle traffic this project was, will generate. And furthermore, this, the, the developer has stated that pedestrian bicycle. And vehicular access for the project to North Fair Oaks Place will be restricted. Except possibly for first responders, which is, there's some question there. It remains unclear as to how those restrictions will be implemented and enforced over a period of time. Without clear plans and enforceable measures, neighbors are concerned about potential impacts on safety, traffic flow. And the overall livability, livability of the area, not only for current, but also for future residents. Beyond the legal issue, the proposal also defies the commitments made during the SAP master plan. It eliminates the proposed one acre buffer and replaces it with an eighty-four stall parking lot directly behind homes. Bringing noise, lighting and traffic. Within fifty feet of existing residences. We've also seen failures in sidewalk standards, staff mentioned that. Easement disclosures, ADA accessibility and utility trenching. These aren't minor oversights. They represent a systemic attempt to squeeze. The maximum number of units into a space that simply cannot support them responsibly. Additionally, this project intentionally closes open water systems in direct violation of Garden City's comprehensive plan. And as stated earlier, this proposed project potentially impacts the flood pain. But, excuse me, the flood plain and FEMA eligibility, which impacts us all. Community members, including many who have intervened in the pending legal case. Have not been adequately heard. I would encourage you to again postpone this and I appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you, sir. All right, we have a couple of. Sign-up sheets that are unclear whether or not there is, uh, testimony that would like to be heard on this, um. Mike Nero?
You don't?
You're not gonna provide testimony? Okay. And then Annie. Williamson, is that correct? Okay. Ms. Marsh? Is it Nancy Marsh? You don't want to testify? Okay. Cynthia Ogle? Cynthia, do you?
And as it is now.
So if, if you want to testify, you can testify and ask your question, but I'm not sure that this is the right form just to open and asking. Question. Okay. Bailey Becker?
My name is Kale Becker, two twenty-three North Sixth Street, Suite three twenty-five Boise, Idaho. I'm also an attorney for some of the, uh, people challenging, uh, the development in district court. First, I want to make a hundred percent clear. My clients are not opposed to improving the golf course, making it better, more beautiful. I see a lot of people who love golf out there. We are not opposed to making the course better. But, but. But, let me have my time. But. There is a court case going on right now and it affects the CCNRs that are recorded against this property. Many of you, I suspect, live in subdivisions. Ask yourself, if you had a subdivision that said there's gonna be a pool here, there's gonna be open space here, there's gonna be golf here. Would you be concerned? Would you be setting your sharing for an out-of-state developer to tear up your open space, to tear up your swimming pool? Of course not.
Everybody, just let him speak without.
The court rulings to date have been in my client's favor. The developer has done everything possible. Hey, I asked for my time to be reset. I've been interrupted repeatedly.
So please, please, hey, so please, if we need to have a recess, if we need to take a break, we can do that, but. We're gonna let the people speak who have the public testimony, so please. It's his, he's speaking about the application, that's fine. So please.
Just reset my time.
So we please let him speak. He'll have three minutes, just like everybody else.
Thank you. To date, the court rulings have been in favor of my client. The developers have done everything possible to drag this case out, to slow it down. And most specifically, my clients have put their position under oath. The developer has not. The developer has done everything possible to avoid sitting for deposition, responding to discovery, producing documents. Ask yourself, is that trustworthy? Right now, the commission is being asked, are there any things that needs to be considered? That could affect the standards that need to be applied? There are CCNRs in place. A requirement that you're looking at is imply, imposing new CCNRs over and on top existing CCNRs. That impacts my client's right of contract guaranteed in the United States Constitution. The government cannot come in and duplicate. The exact nature of a contract that is already in existence. The exact nature of a contract that is already in existence, in place, that's been agreed to by people that purchased this property. This is phase one of three. At what point does this development stop? There are no guarantees. If the golf course is not governed by the CCNRs as the developer thinks. This will keep coming and coming. Ask yourself, what guarantees do you have that it will stop here? Normally, if someone says I need to develop this golf course to pave the way to make improvements, there would be a performance bond in place. There's no bond. All you're doing is taking this developer from out of state's word that they're going to take this money. And use it to improve the golf course. There is nothing written, no contract, no requirement whatsoever. They could skip town. With their money and leave this golf course cut up with twenty five percent gone. Is that a responsible stewardship of a golf course? I think not. What guarantee do River Club members have that this will be an eighteen hole golf course? None whatsoever. This is how an eighteen hole course eventually becomes a nine hole course. I ask that the commission pause its consideration of this application until such time as we have a ruling from the court. I think pausing now, letting the judge take this, it's a matter that's to be decided on an expedited basis under the rules of simple procedure. We're trying to move it as forward as fast as possible, will avoid protracted litigation. That unfortunately could involve Garden City, could involve additional parties as. For interfering with contractual relations here. We're trying to go through and have this done quick and clean and the developer is doing everything possible to avoid that. If you're wanting to move forward on this, look at who you're dealing with and look whether or not they're trustworthy. My clients state their position under oath. They won't. Thank you.
All right, Rachel Bickerton. You.
Thank you, Chairman, members of the committee. My name is Rachel Bickerton. I'm actually also, my husband signed up, but he had to go home and look after our son. He's Tom Donahoe. We both live at seven eight one zero Savannah Court. Garden City, so I'm speaking for both of us. I had some speech words prepared, but I just wanted to address the litigation that you're hearing about. And I'm not sure if it's been shared with you that the HOA, when they were on the HOA sent out a survey to the residents of plantation. Eighty percent of the people that responded responded saying, we no longer, we didn't want to sue, we never wanted to sue the developer. So please know that the reason why you saw us so many shows of hands is we believe in this development. We believe this development is the reason. That will actually save the golf course. We believe the golf course owner, it's very expensive to run that eighteen hole golf course. Gentlemen before me from the business address in the north end said that this development can take it from an eighteen hole golf course to a nine hole golf course. We actually believe that if the development doesn't happen, and with the current planning and zoning of golf course, which means people could build houses on there. There's no protection for it to be a golf course other than us trusting that the current golf course owner will keep it a golf course and we'd rather keep it a golf course. Rather than going from an eighteen hole golf course to a zero golf home golf course. The reason, what I wanted to just mention was that I understand. That there are people who oppose it, but I don't believe. That all of Garden City opposes. More people coming into Garden City to spend taxes, more families moving into the area. We moved here when my son was six months old. He only knows Garden City. It has grown. It's an amazing place to work. I work for the University of Idaho. I am so proud to talk about the the beginnings of Chindon and Garden City and what it's contributed to Boise and the area. We don't have any kids in our street. With the greatest respect, lots of lovely people who've retired. I would love my son to have friends in the neighborhood. I would love my son to be as proud of Garden City as I am. Do I sound like an American? No, I don't, but I'm a proud US citizen and I think we can do better than this NIMBYism that we're seeing. And I'm proud to live in Garden City and I hope that you do the right thing by our neighbors. And then very quickly from my husband, he says, in all due respect to those who oppose this, I feel that they want to win at all costs. But believe that we, the majority, with the ones that will be paying for this. Please, city, help us stop the madness, start the project. Let's move on. Thank you.
All right. Philip Gordon.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, staff. I'm not here to quibble about the height of trees or what streets are always mean. I'm here to discuss a certain larger issue and to talk about certainties. One thing is certain beyond all quibble or quibble. The project has never once sought the approval of the A E C C or the HOA. I think they've always thought they were above the law. The law didn't apply to them whatever. The next certainty is and clarity is of Judge Medema is going to find that. The covenants do apply to Lot One, the golf course. Covenants are contracts. It's equally clear Judge Medema wants this resolved quickly. Because I think that this issue was fully and totally resolved by Article One. Section sixteen of the Idaho Constitution. Allow me to read it. Bills of attainder et cetera prohibited. No bill of attainder ex post facto law. Or law impairing the obligation of contracts shall ever be passed. The contract in question is a master declaration and the covenants. And one of the terms of that contract are that any applicant has to go to the A E C C and then to the HOA. That has never happened. As a result, Garden City cannot, consistent with the Idaho Constitution. Pass a law approving this subdivision. If it does so, it will have violated Article One, Section sixteen of the Idaho Constitution. And that clearly is the case because there's never been A E C C or HOA approval. I've litigated Article One, Section sixteen of the Idaho. Constitution to the Idaho Supreme Court in what is clearly the leading case. It's called Dairy Queen versus the Idaho State Insurance Fund. It was decided on April ninth thirteen. And they've clearly found that you cannot go and retroactively or in any fashion. Violate the terms of a contract between parties. We all know in Judge Medema's first decision denying. The dismissal of the case, he said that the covenants are contracts. Between every landowner and every other landowner. Before that. Happens if Garden City seeks grants approval, if the P and Z grants approval, you will be sued. You will lose, you will end up paying the legal fees of those parties opposing this. And you, that is so because you're being placed unnoticed right now of the provisions of the Idaho institution. It doesn't matter how many fools want to boo. They can't change a constitutional term. It doesn't matter how many people sign a survey or anything else saying they want us to proceed. They can't change the constitution.
Thank you, sir.
Applies, period, category.
All right, the next person. So the next person is. So the next person to speak, Lisa Ramonski. And please again state your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Lisa Romanowski. I reside at fifty eight seventy three North Capitol Lane in Boise. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening. Okay, can you hear me now? Okay, thank you. Sorry about that. Thank you for the opportunity to allow me to address you this evening. I've reviewed the plans and all of the submittals that the developer has submitted and. In my professional opinion, I've noted some glaring errors. One of them is there seems to be a lack of capacity analysis, namely. Connection of water, power, sewer and storm drain. While I acknowledge the need for a development, I support responsible development. And you can't just keep adding to existing infrastructure without analyzing the ability for the existing infrastructure to. Accommodate new developments. Furthermore, the plat shows use of permeable pavers. Which disregards the geotechnical report and the geotechnical report provides a pavement recommendation. Use of permeable pavers seems to disregard the need for responsible storm water management in the property. Namely inclusion of bioretention basins and bioswales. If those features had been added to the layout as it is shown, it is likely that. There would either be less townhomes shown or the footprint would need to expand to accommodate such features. Also, one of your members here discussed the need for sidewalks. Those were also missing from the plats. And again, if those features had been added, you would likely see probably fewer townhomes. Or an expansion of the footprint as compared to what has been provided. Also of note, in the geotechnical report, it calls for three feet of fill. I would recommend that you ask for a line of sight and elevation renderings so you could properly understand. From a perspective, how tall these buildings are going to be sitting on that fill. Lastly, I would also urge you to recommend. A request for evidence of financing from the developer so that they can prove that they can actually finance. And successfully build their project. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. William Whitney. Thank you, sir. Remember, state your name and address for the record, please.
I'm Bill Whitney. Live at forty five thirty five Savannah Lane. In Garden City. I'm a member of the River Club. This is. Members of the club, my family. The people that I see every day and the neighbors that I have in this community. So I heard a little bit about this gentleman talk about. The neighbors of the plantation development. But honestly, how many neighbors have I got here that are for this development? Can you raise your hands? It's quite a bit more than what you're seeing here. So this isn't a representation of the neighborhood. This is a representation of a small few. Like the fellow that just walked out and said, we're going to sue you. That's not the way we're built. We're built to have improvements for the golf course, I'm sorry, for the golf course and for the community. And this particular development is only going to add. To the beauty of Garden City and the development that's happened over the many years. Along Chindon and in our neighborhood. The other thing I heard was from the gentleman from Seattle. That in nineteen seventy eight. This happened and these developments had to go through these processes. I lived here in nineteen seventy eight. It was far different than it is now. There were developments going up everywhere and things got approved very quickly. I can honestly say that. The ownership and the management of the club that we belong to, who's proposing this development, cares about our community. Cares deeper and deeply and has put a tremendous amount of money into our club. And into the community to make this something that's worthwhile for not only my kids, my kids are too old, but for my grandkids. And quite honestly, I can't understand why the small few would want to put a stop to this particular development. For whatever reason, it blows my mind. So I just wanted to say that I hope my brethren here, my friends, my family. Stand with me in support of this particular development. And I think it's time to quit dragging our feet and get rid of this litigation and go forward.
Be careful. All right, Mike Jones.
Mr. Chairman, the last speaker and your show of hands encompassed everything I want to say.
Thank you. Tom Donahoe.
Oh, thank you.
Patty Perkins. And again, please state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Patty Perkins. I live at fifty nine twenty eight West Plantation Lane. I'm very glad to be speaking with you all tonight. Clearly, this is an emotionally charged issue for many of us. And I want to just make a few points. I was not going to bring up the CCNR issue because that is not germane specifically to this application which we support. However, it needs to be mitigated to ensure that it. It fits within the SAP and the codes, so be it. But it is an important part of what our community needs in order to retain. The beautiful open space the other side seems to purport to want. The CCNR issue to me is magical thinking. In nineteen seventy eight, they. Had this huge piece of land that has been divided up. None of us would live there if there hadn't been development on this land. That has been a golf course for very, a lot, a lot of years. So the fact is, I had people sitting in my living room. We were trying to understand where they were coming from. They went through this sixty page declaration, this page, this page to this page, to this page, to this page, and that's how they figured out. How they could. Say that the CCNRs apply to the golf course. That on its face is absurd. And ridiculous because it's a business. And since nineteen seventy eight, the HOA has never. Applied the CCNRs, the A E C C to the golf course. We believe in this development or development in order to support. This open space and family, club, atmosphere we all love in the neighborhood. The division in the neighborhood is very, very sad. But it is significant and it is a few people with loud voices that have made. Have followed a playbook in order to get their message across. So I thank you.
So that's all that we've had for the public testimony. There are others that have signed whether or not that they are in. Support or opposition. So we will add those to the record. Is there anybody else in the audience that wishes to testify that hasn't had the opportunity? All right, seeing none. Is there anybody in Zoom that would like to speak? All right, seeing none, then we will return back to the applicant for his rebuttal.
Mr. Chair, for the record again, I'm John Wardle with Brighton. Appreciate the opportunity to again to summarize and to talk through. Talk through a few items. There was a reference made to out of state. Out of state developers not interested in the community. That's not true. We are local. We've been local. We have been part of the community for a long time. And in fact, we were engaged in the process. We have been involved in the neighborhood meetings. I have. Had interactions with a couple of the residents who are on one side of this equation. We've never been one. We've never been one to be divisive. We've opened up the conversation to have with them. The issue that they are asking to be resolved is something that's not in front of you tonight. This is a quasi-judicial discussion regarding the application, which is a preliminary final plat. And so we want to stay focused upon that issue. Do appreciate everybody taking the time to come out tonight, though. It is, it is a summer night. It's busy. People have better things to do, but appreciate the time and effort to be here. There are a couple of things that are, you know, in motion here. And specifically, there were some sideboards placed on this project, which was related to how the project is accessed. We have made a strong and continued commitment to limit any access with the exception of emergency to Fair Oaks through the use of fencing and across that entire area. So there will not be any connections to Fair Oaks. Life safety is still important, and that's why we have that as a secondary access, and there will be ultimately permanent accesses through the sub-districts. There's been some references made to engineering. Keep in mind that this is a preliminary final plat. Engineering plans are submitted and they're reviewed. They'll be reviewed in the context of the city's ordinances. They'll be reviewed in context of the different provisions, whether it's storm drainage, sewer, water, floodplain as well. All those things will be reviewed by the city engineer and will, will have to comply with those conditions, including storm drainage. And one of the things that was mentioned was the use of pavers. It's a very common practice. It's an alternative practice. They are allowed. They do meet the requirements for fire as well as services and things like that. There. When we did submit our application, we did classify everything that was coming off of the main private road coming in, which was River Club Street. Everything else was classified as an alley. We classified them as alley simply for wayfinding purposes so they could be addressed. In Ada County, even if they're a private street and for addressing purposes, you submit an application. That's what we did. In talking with staff further, there was question about whether they were alleys or some other type of use. And so we, we decided in conversations, and obviously it's been spoken about tonight by staff, to use a common driveway. There's this interesting moment in time where the ordinance was being updated, question about PUD. I would submit to you that the specific area plan for the River Club is a PUD in and of itself. It has provided guidelines on how we can comply with the ordinances there. There, we have defined our access as common driveways. There's been back and forth regarding that. But we go back to the ordinance specifically says by definition that a common driveway, which is an access lane, could, two or more residences could use that. We've never said that the roadways internal or these access drives were roads. We do have an extensive sidewalk system throughout the project. As I mentioned earlier, this is very similar to a lot of other projects that you've had, where you have common driveways. There are very few instances where you have detached sidewalks, which was referenced tonight. That's not a condition. It should not be applied to this application either because it has not been applied to other applications. Also, come back to this issue on the forward motion. The ordinance is the same in city code or in the SAP. And this application of forward motion is arbitrary. This does not apply to garages. Otherwise, you would have to go back and look at every other single project that has been approved with a attached garage, whether it's on a common driveway or a private street or a public street. Those projects, under this interpretation, are not allowed. The parking areas relate to parking lots. You do not want a road coming through a parking lot and having people back into that. But it's different for driveways or garages coming on to whether it's a common drive, a private street, or a public street. We do appreciate the time that has been spent on this application. We really have come down to a couple of issues. We believe that these issues are encapsulated within the approved SAP, that we do have common driveways in the project, we have sufficient sidewalks and pathways throughout the project, and our primary source of access is coming off of River Club Drive, which connects to State Street. I think that hits my points. We do appreciate the opportunity to discuss the matter before you, and we again request your approval based on the changes we have to the decision that are before you tonight and make a recommendation to the city council of approval of the stateside subdivision. Stand for any questions you might have.
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant? Mr. Shepherd.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much for your presentation. I do have a couple of questions, and it does involve the driveways, the garages. And I'm, like I said before when Hannah was up, I know that the information is in the packet with the, but like, there's probably, it probably tells me how wide the road is, but I don't read those very well. So can you tell me how wide the road is, please?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Shepherd, our common driveways are 26 feet wide, which would allow two-way traffic through there, but without any parking on either side of that. So it is a, intended to be a shared access through at 26 feet wide.
Thank you. So just to clarify, so it does contemplate two ways. Is this like right up next to the building structures? I guess I'm, my question is leading to, is there a clear vision triangle when you're pulling out of a garage?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Shepherd, the buildings are set back from the common drive, about four feet, in some cases more than that, but I think we have a minimum of four-foot setback. If, if you take it in the context of an alley, this is not dissimilar from the way that many of your projects have already been approved, where these garages are accessing an alley. So it's the same context as that. But we do have a setback from the shared, pardon me, from the common drive.
Thank you. And also, just looking at the definition of an alley, it's a minor street providing a secondary access. I'm thinking this is the only vehicular access, from what I'm understanding. So I'm not sure how, and I guess I don't want to get into like too much of like quibbling between definitions, but like, I don't see how it's an alley if that's the primary way vehicles are entering or accessing the garages.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Shepherd, and that's why we have, we're using the definition of a common drive.
Okay.
Which had been done in a lot of your other projects, like we mentioned, have had a number of homes access a shared lane or a common driveway for those homes.
Thank you. I feel like I've heard it said both ways, so I'm just trying to like follow and make sure I'm understanding what you mean. So, okay. Thank you. I think, I think your first answer to my first question kind of answers my last question is like, where are you envision large commercial vehicles and school buses? It sounds like those they're going to have, like they'll be able to access the area.
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Shepherd, yes, that's correct. There is sufficient room for all the public utility, like fire, garbage, school buses, more than enough room, especially by not having any parking on that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? I don't have any. Commissioner Smith.
Hello. Going in order maybe from easiest to hardest, the landscape issue. Do you agree with the staff's proposed frontage definition of defining it as, I wrote it down somewhere, the primary?
Primary access.
Yes, yes. Is that an acceptable definition?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Smith, we do believe that the front of those homes is the primary access of the home, and so that's where that, those trees will be planted, and we do comply with that.
Okay, so it sounds like that issue's essentially been resolved, is that correct?
I believe that the way that staff has drafted that, if we all agree that that is the primary access of the home, then yes.
Okay. Okay. And going to the streets, so if we were determined that the roadways that move through the development are in fact streets, that would... But we also determined that that subdivision six, as you said, does not apply to garages and private driveways. It's meant for parking lots. That would resolve your backing out issue, but that would still leave you with the sidewalk requirements, correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Smith, under that interpretation, that would still be an issue. We don't, we do not view them as streets.
Okay. If the commission were to view them as streets, though, but, but take that approach to the parking areas definition, how would you modify to adjust for that sidewalk requirement? Would you just shift all the pathways out, or what, what's the, what's plan B on the sidewalks?
Mr. Mr. Chair, Commissioner Smith, the, under staff's interpretation of it, we would have to attach sidewalks, we'll have sidewalks on both sides throughout that. As, since we're treating them as a shared access, the only way to accommodate that would be to move the sidewalks in and push the homes back and reduce the common area on the backside of those homes.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? Mr. Wardle, I have a couple of questions. So we heard some testimony today regarding the access on Fair Oaks, and we just explained to me how that's going to be limited.
Give me one second. Let me just pull up the slide really quick for you. Mr. Chair, on this exhibit right here, which is also landscape violence, but will help highlight this issue or the question here, the area that's highlighted in red is an existing fence. The area that we're showing in blue would be new fencing that we would install, and there's a little dashed line there that connects to Fair Oaks, that it would be a solid gate that would be locked, most likely with a Knox box or something that the fire department could get into if they needed to get in there. But otherwise, it would be a solid fence along that entire frontage where we connect to the red all the way over to the edge of that existing home south of us. So that's how we would control both the vehicular, pedestrian, and bicycle access from our project into Fair Oaks.
All right, thank you. And then going back to the discussion with Commissioner Smith and the identification of the street as a street versus something else. And if there was the application of the sidewalks, where would you anticipate? So you said that there would be some of those buffer areas that would be reduced? Is that correct?
We can look at this one. If, Mr. Chair, if we were required to put the sidewalk along the common drive, then we'd just push everything else back. And so we would push the homes closer to each boundary, still within the allowable, compliant with the setback area, but that's what would happen. However, I do want to go back to the overall... The overall circulation of all of these sidewalks that are coming off of the common driveways to the pathways, which would go to the primary access points of these homes. If applied as a common driveway, which other projects in Garden City have, that this is an acceptable, approved standard. We do not believe that the sidewalks paralleling the common driveway are necessary, but there's more than sufficient ways for individuals to, to get to the front of those homes if they're a guest or visiting their neighbors. So this is our preferred configuration and layout of the project.
Thank you. And it's, it's my understanding that many of those other applications with the configuration of the common drive are under a PUD, which is a different mechanism, but I hear what you're saying. And then there's also been some discussion on the overall height with 35 feet, and then whether or not that that would be increased due to building up the, the ground for flooding or whatever is necessary. Can you address that?
Mr. Chair, there actually, yes, there will be grading of the entire site. There very well could be some areas that are raised three feet. There are others that may not be. It's going to be raised based off of the engineering and what that tells us to do on how we get sufficient separation from utility connections and also storm drainage that we would have within the paper road system. So it is an engineering discussion, and yes, there will be grading of the entire site, and there will be areas that will be raised to three feet.
Thank you. Commissioner Brown?
Mr. Chairman, I had indicated I hadn't questioned, but your question just prompted a, a question which I hope to clarify a little bit of this issue of 35 feet and the three feet. Mr. Wardle, the primary reason for the three-feet addition in some cases is to get the, the pad that these buildings will be built in, three feet above the base flood elevation. Am I, am I not correct?
Mr. Chair, Commissioner Brown, I mean, that is a portion of it, yes, that, so that we can build to the city's standards for floodplain application.
That is correct. Thank you.
Any other questions for the applicant? All right, seeing none, we will now close the public hearing. This matter is now before the commission, and again, we are recommending body, and we will discuss the matter. Mr. Smith.
All right. Taking things somewhat in order, I had four things that I wanted to touch base on. The first is the landscaping issue. It appears that that has been resolved. I agree with staff's proposed definition. I think it is as good as we're going to get, and I don't have any concerns with using that definition going forward and applying it to future projects. Touching very briefly on the CCNRs, since it came up several times, I don't believe that this is the proper forum to litigate the application and enforceability of the CCNRs. That's between the HOA and the property owners. It's a civil matter. There is no stay in this case, either because it was not requested or because it was not granted, but our job is simply to determine if the subdivision meets code, and that's it. If the court later determines that the CCNRs do apply, that's an issue for the applicant. So I don't believe we have to stay our proceedings or address that in any other way. Regarding the roads and by extension, the sidewalks, I think the code is confusing, and I appreciate staff's efforts to give us multiple interpretations that we could look at and, and choose from. I don't see these roads as common driveways. I think that while you can certainly have a common driveway serve a significant number of units, 134 is a lot of units to consider this to be a common driveway. The way it's being used, as Commissioner Shepherd pointed out, the fact that you're going to have traffic moving in both directions, you're going to have fire access, school bus access. In theory, all of the, the laws and restrictions that apply to roads would apply here. If this is a driveway, then the applicability of things like registration requirements, DUIs, licensing requirements, all, all come into, to play. So I, I don't see, I think it's a stretch to call this a common driveway. So I think it's a street. I think it's a private street and everything that comes with that, which would, well, I'll get to sidewalks in a minute. But going back to the parking issues, I don't believe that subsection six applies to garages and private driveways. I think it's, I think if you look at the context of the language within that subsection, it's clear to me that it applies to parking lots. It's talking about having a parking lot that is circular in nature. You go in one way, you continue, you're not backing out into the road. It's, it's simply illogical to have that definition applied to a driveway. As Commissioner Brown pointed out, everyone would have to have one of those Um, as Commissioner Brown pointed out, everyone would have to have one of those fancy circles with the fountain in the middle in order to get in and out of their of their properties. So to me, that is the cleanest and I think the most accurate interpretation, given the lack of clarity in the code. That brings us to the sidewalks. If we were to take that interpretation that these are streets, the sidewalks are mandated by code, it is not wavable. Um, it would be potentially through a P U D process, but here um I don't believe we have a mechanism to to simply ignore that requirement. And it's not a matter of liking or disliking the project. I think the internal pathways are great. Um, and if um if that were what the code said, then that would be what the code said. So as far as I can tell, the the developer is stuck with with the sidewalk requirement and whatever that comes with. But overall, I would recommend approval with those comments.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that detailed assessment. Commissioner Brown?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, and thank you, Commissioner Smith. You've managed to do something that will shorten what my comments will be because I agree. In most cases, no. I'm glad you did. And so let me get to the issues. First of all, I'm I'm very much in favor of recommending approval of this. And I want to say primarily because this is exactly what is envisioned in the State Street Corridor Plan that was approved by Garden City in two thousand and eight and incorporated into our comprehensive plan. This is what's envisioned, or that State Street Plan will not work. But so that gets us to several issues. The first one is this issue of backing out of the garages and the parking spaces. I agree with Commissioner Smith. I do not believe it is confusing and I certainly understand how Hannah came to her conclusions and what she did. However, I don't believe that this interpretation is what the intent of the code is about. For example, I live on a private street. It happens to be at the plantation. And there are fifty six houses on that street. It's private street. There are fifty six houses, only one of the fifty six, twenty of them are townhouses. Uh, thirty six of them are single houses. Only one house on that street doesn't back out directly under the street. And it couldn't be fixed, houses that don't have a big enough lot. This would, if we interpret it this way, then what this requirement would be, and it is the same language that's in the regular code, it would mean that we couldn't approve anything that didn't have a large enough lot so that you had a hammerhead turnaround in the front yard or on the side yard or a circular driveway as always was described. That being said, the question is, how can we do that? And maybe we'll have to discuss this a little bit more. I understand what you're saying. My proposal was that if we agreed that it could be considered for this purpose as a common drive, even though it had a a private street thing for the purposes of doing like that, then that would resolve it without the necessity for them to put a sidewalk into. I I want to address that a little bit later. Though I'm not exactly sure, and maybe we have to do some discussion about whether we can do that. Uh, I also understand in your recommendation, just say what they originally said that they were going to be, which were private streets. Nevertheless, I think that we had seen component us to to address this, not hold this up for this purpose. But in the future, for this is going to come up, we need to have the staff and we need to talk about clarifying the language, in my opinion, both in the S A P for the future, because we're going to have other issues that come up on this S A P uh, on the River Club and also it, but then the code as Hannah has pointed out. So I really think we need to look at clarifying that in the code. Uh, the second issue and Miss and Commissioner Smith did a better job than I could. And that's what's regarded this question of the master declaration. Uh, what you said is exactly when my consistent with my understanding and what we were told as acknowledged by Mr. Leroy when we did consider the S A P. The Master Association, Plantation Master Association, Declaration, Master Association Agreement and the C C N R's is a civil contract between the members and their board. And regardless of what happens in the Fourth District Court, it will remain that either way it goes and it will be an issue then between the developer and that homeowner association. And the next item, uh, was mentioned briefly about the issue of the one acre landscape portion. As I recall, when we considered the S A P, that went away. When they drew a line on that and made an agreement that there would be nothing above thirty five feet in that portion went like that, and it no longer was a requirement. It was not part of the S A P. And that leads us to the issue of the thirty five feet. And as I already pointed out, and this has been true since two thousand and eight, when I first came on this board, always the height reduction restrictions where the thirty five has been measured from the top of the pad that is a requirement to get it out of the flood at base flood elevation that's required in the flood zone. So if that that has never been measured in any development that I've heard in this board, where it was asserted that it should be counted from what the elevation has existed prior to putting material in there to build the paths. The issue on the fence across at Fair Oaks. Always it was foreseen in the S A P that at some point, some parts of this development would be accessible to the golf course and wouldn't be fenced. In other words, there wouldn't be a fence in that portion. I think what the developer has proposed in there and was outlined on the map is is sufficient. And it will carry the purpose of providing that separation. Uh, and make sure that there's not access on the Fair Oaks other than for the emergency way, which is a requirement of the fire department and A C H D, by the way, also uh, with that in their requirements. Uh, the issue of high groundwater and the flooding and being in the floodway and the drainage. Hannah has taken care of that by strengthening up requirement number fourteen in the event that we recommend approval. And I'm going to read it because it it refers to we will take care of all of those issues. And in that, it will it now reads, all stormwater systems shall comply with Garden City Code eight dash eight A three eight dash seven A. All drainage shall be retained on site. All comments made by the city engineer regarding site grading and drainage plans and stormwater operation and management agreement shall be resolved prior to the civil plan approval. And then for that, and I won't read all of that, but if you read the engineers, city engineers report, he addresses all of those issues, those having to do with bioswells, which there aren't any proposed on that, but as has already been stated by Mr. Wardle, numerous developments uh, recommended by approval by this board do not have bioswells. Instead, they have pavers and infiltration into into uh, structures will take care of that. And that all of that will have to be designed and approved and stamped by a professional engineer. And that will all be approved by the city engineer, which should resolve all of those issues. Uh, we talked about the thirty five feet, talked about Fair Oaks. The tiling, the tiling on the portion of the drain. Part of that is required to be, as was already pointed out, because giving a separation from the sewer system that crosses it. And the original S A P, which was approved by the city, uh, and the master plan for that provide for tiling a portion of that of that drain. And so in my opinion, that's consistent with what was in there. The issue of sidewalks. In my opinion, the ten foot pathways along the south side, along State Street, along and the southern boundary, along with the sidewalks that are envisioned in the Prungban provide more than adequate connectivity. It does leave us with this problem, which I suppose we could have to go back and talk about a little more about what we're going to classify these as private streets, or if at the same time, we could classify them as a common drive. Uh, if we do wind up saying that we're gonna, our recommendation would based on being private streets, and I agree with Commissioner Smith. And that will leave us with a situation unless city council changed it, uh, where uh, the developer, if he's going to proceed, would have to uh, make some accommodation of putting sidewalks. However, at Camp One, and there is a process, they do not have to be separated. All sidewalks, they can be, and we have approved that recommended approval before where they could be contiguous to that section of the road and almost be part of it. Uh, you already addressed the addition of trees. And I think that's uh, that exhausts what I have as issues and my thoughts on them. And as I said, my recommendation would be we recommend approval.
Thank you, Commissioner Brown. Commissioner Shepard?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. So um, I want to just say first of all that I really appreciate everyone coming out and voicing like so much emotion for Garden City and for your neighborhoods and homes. Either way, whichever side you're on, just having that like love for your community and your homes really shows shows through and it just makes me feel like I was I was just happy to read a lot of your letters and I, which I did read all of them. Um, as far as the deliberations go, Commissioner Smith, thank you so much for your um this your um explanation on the C C N R's and what we're here to do tonight, that I could not have said that myself. And so I I agree with you on that, like we're here to um this, you know, determine whether or not this application fits code and not determine civil matters. So I agree with that and um, agree that the landscaping issue appears to be resolved. And um, so I'm getting to my page here. I have so many notes that I've taken. I think I mentioned that the landscaping appears to be resolved, um, but I'm not, or I'm in favor of not requiring the six, but vegetation buffer buffer that we talked about at the beginning. And I also see the roadway as a private street and I I don't see it as a common drive. Just based on the number of of um, units inside and also that brings us to like where we have to talk about the sidewalks and I think that with that, I don't know exactly what's going to happen with the sidewalks if we do think of it as a private street. And I know that was one of the decisions that we we had to make tonight. But I'm just letting you know that's where I stand on it. And overall, I recommend approval for this application. I with, you know, with everything that's been aforementioned. Commissioner Brown, I really appreciate your discussion too on the engineering. Um, I'll leave it at that. I I know the engineers have looked at it and that will go continue as the process develops to make sure everything is a court is in line with that. I don't feel like I can comment on it more than what they as a professional say.
Thank you, Commissioner Shepard. I appreciate all the fellow commissioners' assessments and review of this matter. I want to thank staff. This was a big one, a heavy load to carry. So thank you for the the thorough review and providing us with um, guidance on some of these different items. By going over the proposed definition of landscaping, I too agree that the conditions are acceptable and it sounds like there's no problem there with the current configuration. Not quite resolved on the common drive versus the private street. I would like to have a conversation on that with fellow commissioners. However, I do I do consider what Commissioner Smith is saying is the distinction between um, parking lots versus garage and driveways and how to look at that interpretation. And then also how that's going to overall, the overall effect of that with the sidewalks. Understanding that there is some concern with what that does to the boundary areas as well as the buffers. Overall, I'm in a I'm in agreement with the fellow commissioners that I would recommend approval, but would like to have further discussion on the distinctions on common drives versus the private streets. And then how that's going to impact the overall site development. Um, I don't know, Commissioner Brown, if you said that there was some other questions that we would need to ask. I don't know of staff about whether or not if it is a common drive, but that would how it affect the application or not? Is that what you were alluding to?
Well, I'm alluding, um, define. I understand what Commissioner Smith said with regard to this. As as envisioned in there, it's a common drive has been approved. It used to be on the P U D's. I realize that that's not a P U D or that we're sitting, we're doing on the S A P. But under the recent changes, that can apply to more than four. For example, in the P U D language, used to say you could have four off of it. This says two or more. And so I'm I'm sit thinking of the problem. We have many more than two or two or more. I'm not sure. You could do that if we want to classify it as that. That is one way if we understand it, if we could see ourselves. So we declared them as a common drive for this purpose. Then it it eliminates that problem. If we decide that it's streets, private streets, then we have a problem within the code that it says that it has to have a sidewalk. Though we it doesn't have to be separated. We can't be, in the past, we made it possible. So it can be discontiguous. In fact, in some cases, we made it so it differentiated with the pavement structure from one part of it's almost part of the road. Uh, and which the edge of it was kind of either had patterned brick on it or something like that that differentiated, but it was the same structure. If we did that, then I think that would resolve the issue. In other words, make part of the roadway count as the sidewalk. And if we did that, then and and I agree with Commissioner Smith. I think the intent of it, and later on, we need to clarify this is that driving out forward is meant intended to bring for parking lots and parking garages, which you would have buildup area. It was not intended, or it shouldn't have been intended to apply to garages and parking spaces have associated with residents. But so the question is, how how do we define the roads or how does, why, how do we tell Hannah to define the roads? So that we don't have to enforce this backing out restriction. I think that's a problem. We might ask the staff if they got any ideas.
I feel like Hannah summarized our options quite well in the staff report. Correct me if I'm wrong, but it's, I believe that under the, this application was submitted under the prior code. So we are locked into that. So if we were to decide, I I don't believe we we can decide that this is a common driveway because it doesn't meet that code's definition of a comp driveway. There's too many homes. So i- if that were our leaning, I imagine the applicant would withdraw their application, resubmit under the new code. So i- if that were our leaning, I imagine the applicant would withdraw their application, re-submit under the new code. Um, which means that our conversation is somewhat hypothetical today, if that's the direction that you are leaning. Yeah, I just, just pointing out that, that procedural hiccup. Um. With that said. I, I think I'm still struggling. It feels like we're. We're trying to make this a common driveway in order to avoid the sidewalk. Rules and, and that to me feels like we're just shoehorning the code a little bit and. I, 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 I think that's what, that's where I'm struggling with this. To me, it's, it's a private street and the rules that come with that come with that. I, I, I don't think it's that. Large of a burden to meet the sidewalk requirements. And if that involves reconfiguring a few things, then, then so be it. Um, to minimally meet the code. As, as you said, Commissioner Brown, if there's a way to meet it with, with street. Street sidewalks, then, then great. Um. But, but I think we're, we're going down a rabbit hole if we try to define these as common driveways.
Let, let it run from this to, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I, I agree with you. So why, why don't like, let us think a little bit about how we could do it. Supposedly, we worked up some wording. Would authorize. Let's. Uh, sidewalks would be put, not make them so that they're not separated. They would be contiguous with the road and would be the sidewalk. Had some kind of a pattern to it or something where the sidewalk, for example, sidewalk was a, a concrete. Think about a concrete edge and in between the two concrete sections, which were sidewalks, was the road. The private street. That, let's say it was made out asphalt or even a different, a different type of brick. Or, or there's going to be pavers already. So, uh, most, a lot of this is all going to ready to get and be paved. So there will be a differentiation from that, from the edge of it. And that part of it was the sidewalk. And then it would, it would not necess- necessitate so much changes. It would meet the department, uh, the fire department's requirements would be wide enough.
Do you think, Commissioner Brown, it would be sufficient to just instruct staff that. Minimal, whatever the minimum requirements. Of the sidewalks to meet code. That's, that's what we're recommending with, and then they can sort it out with the applicant.
We're not going to approve this tonight. We're not recommending, we were already going to postpone the actual approval document until the next meeting.
But I think the intention is to have the public hearing closed, have our recommendation ready. And then that way, if there's any errors or any issues that we could deal with it next week. I don't know that we're looking to postpone.
Yeah.
Um, Chairman, members of the commissions, you're looking at staff for clarification. Yes, that was staff's intent that. Um, given the complexity of the issues that you're discussing tonight, to give staff a couple of days to make sure that we're accurate reflecting your conversation. Um, but no, uh, staff was not hoping to leave the public hearing open. Thank you.
There are two other issues though, that I think we need to mention before we have to, before we ever have a motion. That we didn't cover. Uh, the one lands, part of the landscaping, we did take care of. Having to do with the landscaping, uh, that. Uh, where the front of the, frontage of the house is. Uh, and we decided that that would go along with what the staff recommended. But there was also the issue of, of missing landscaping along the golf course. And a portion I remember where. Mr. Wardle had a line drawn and he wants to have that waived. I think that I'm in favor of waiving that. Uh, because that's going to be the section where they're going to be open right onto the golf course. And so we need, uh, we need to take that piece out. And there were also, and I looked into this, uh. Very quickly, this applicant's response. Where they had made some other minor corrections and changes.
Right.
When we hit around to it, I, I just quickly looked at it and consistent with this other discussion. Uh, most of these, I think we should, uh, say that have the staff incorporate them into the final decision.
Yeah. So Commissioner Brown, you're talking about the south boundary line, um, hedges.
Right.
And then also, uh, the tree plantings in the easement area.
Right. I think that we should probably, I'm in favor of going along with what the applicant recommended there.
And so.
And I think, uh, we have the power to waive that.
So what you're referring to is in, on page sixteen, prior to approval of construction plans, it would be. Section three subsection F two, which would be deleted. And that's that six foot wide, six foot tall vegetative screen.
That's correct. I think that you just have to waive that and delete it.
And then I think that the other one that you're talking about, uh, Commissioners, Commissioner Brown is, uh, following F, it's G. The landscaping items.
What page are we on?
Yeah, there you go. So it's page seventeen. G.
I'm sorry, just pulling up the code. Can we just go back to, uh, vegetative screen? Why would we waive that?
So Commissioner Smith is asking about the waiving of that condition?
The one that.
The, the maturing.
Yeah, that was the, the, which page was that that you mentioned?
Uh, page. Page, I think sixteen and staffs and seventeen. The, the applicant's. Revisions. It was the six foot wide, six foot tall vegetative screen, right?
That is correct, in which they're making a recommendation to delete it.
Right, but I'm seeing that in eight, eight A, three G, five. C. Two, a screen consisting of vegetation shall be at least six feet wide and six feet in height at maturity. It, it appears to be required by code. And, and since this isn't a PUD, on, on what basis would we waive that?
I don't know, but I think we need to figure out how we could do that. The intent of this is to, to. Separate this from another piece of property. I realize this is a different piece of property than the rest of the golf course. But to have them put that down there in, in the way what's envisioned in this development. Doesn't. Doesn't make sense to me if I have them do that, have them put this in. So.
Uh.
And this one. So you know, like, yeah, well, this one, we need to do this one too.
Okay.
Can, can you remind me, uh? Commissioner Brown, is the, the visual barrier, do you recall, is that between? The SAP district and the other neighborhood or is that between different things?
No, it's not. That's the thing. It's not between the neighborhood. It's, if it's along there was the drawing, Mr. Mr. World had a drawing up there. It's between this development and the golf course.
Ah.
All along the golf course, not the property. There, the, the properties where the houses are. Over like where Fair Oaks is on those other areas.
So we could.
That's going to be separated by other landscaping and the fence. But this was the area where it's going to be open to the golf course.
So we could conclude maybe that that's not a neighboring use and therefore this doesn't apply. Potentially.
Show the map.
Yeah, that might help actually. Might be too late for the map.
So anyway, I, I, I agree. Maybe Hannah's going to put up a picture for us.
It takes them. Thank you.
We're going to talk about.
Screen. So it looks like this, this section is involving perimeter landscaping.
He had a good drawing.
So it looks like this section involves perimeter landscape. So just the perimeter of the project. And the part that talks about a screen says a screen consisting of vegetation and it gives the height and width, but. It appears that those can be trees. It doesn't have to be a, a screen could consist of. Simply trees.
So we could change it. We could change it. And you mean, you're saying rather than putting like a hedge.
Yeah, I think, I think screen is, it just says a screen consisting of vegetation. And I, I, to me, that's vague enough that it can be.
Just work staff on.
Just something vegetative.
So do you think, are you thinking of screen as like a divider? I'm thinking of it as like something like a visual screen, which I wouldn't want to.
Yeah, I mean, it says the purpose is to provide a visual barrier between the River Club SAP district and neighboring uses to enhance the streets, streetscape to provide privacy. And protect uses from wind, dust, noise. Et cetera. And then it says, uh. Required perimeter landscaping, meeting the standards set forth in subsection C. Is required between the River Club SAP district and neighboring uses. So is the golf course considered a neighboring use or is it considered part of the SAP?
No, it's not part of the SAP area.
Technically a neighboring use. So then there's a, there's.
Yeah.
Then there's some standards in C and. Seeing vegetation, at least one tree. Yeah, my reading of subsection C is that these are options. You need perimeter landscaping and you can do it any of these. Ways. You can do trees, you can do. The screen. So it says the landscape area shall be at least 10 feet wide, measured from the property line to the interior of the parcel. And they talk about the screen, then they talk about one tree planted for every forty feet. Forty linear feet of perimeter length. To quickly establish continuous canopy coverage.
So the applicant could work with staff on the appropriate.
I, I feel like there's flexibility to, to work with staff and.
We.
Meeting the.
Need to address something that I agree since we're not going to do that, maybe staff can.
To meet the, the purpose and privacy considerations without being. Uh, yeah, I, I, I wouldn't say it's a waiver. It's more of an interpretation of screening. And I, I think there's room for flexibility in that.
And then Commissioner Brown, did you still want to discuss item G? So it's on that page seventeen, Commissioner Smith, the following.
Landscape islands.
Yep, where there's that easement. So it allows for mediation in other areas. Due to the easement.
Uh, well, that's, that's correct, but that would take care of that. I think that's taken care of by the language she put in here. Right?
So that's for the other condition that they were concerned with, or they mentioned within the easement. So, yeah, I think.
They couldn't do it. It seems to me that this language will take care of it.
Yes.
Right? In other words, they can do alternatives, right?
Yep.
And it provides, so I don't think we need to do anything there. You know, I don't know. Maybe, maybe Commissioner Smith, hopefully she's ready to try a, try a motion. And then we can try and help her. I.
I, I can take a go at it. It, um. Share anything. I have before I try. You have any further thoughts on the? The street? Definition or? Street. Shared driveway distinctions?
Nope. Uh, I'll entertain a motion if there's no more discussion on the matter.
Just had a question about it. Did we settle on the, just saying like minimum standards? Cause I know the applicant said when I asked my question that there was four feet, but it's like a buffer, I must have got the word used. But like when you pull right out, there's four feet before you hit the street. I mean. And then the sidewalks can be four feet. Is that right? Like at a minimum? It can they just be on one side? I don't remember.
So it's going to be the application of the, the code in that sense. And I think that the distinction that Commissioner Smith. Identified was the sidewalks that were per code. At the minimum, so.
Yes.
But Mr. Mr. Chairman. When you make it, I do think you want to, we want to allow for them to be. Contiguous with the street, then they don't have to be separated.
So not detached sidewalk.
They're not detached. Don't require them to be detached.
I'm just not sure what the code says about that off the top of my head.
So the, I think that the code.
We've made numerous developments where we've, we've done away with the requirement for me detached.
On a straight subdivision or on a PUD?
So on the, I think the SAP actually requires that, let me find it.
I think it does as well. I think we could do that on.
So.
But, um, so.
So I believe that, so eight dash eight A dash three E six sidewalk standards. So all site, and this is within the SAP. Um, sidewalks shall be required along streets. All sidewalks shall be a minimum of five feet on public streets, except where the sidewalk on State Street shall be a minimum of 10 feet. The pathway width on the private right of way may be reduced to four feet. So if we're saying that this is a private right of way, then it could be reduced to four feet. Sidewalks shall be designed to flare around mailboxes, utility boxes and other impediments to pedestrian circulation to maintain. Four feet of travel with. Detached sidewalks are required to allow for landscaping and street tree buffers.
Let's see, there's a problem there. That's what we put in other developments where you have a, a flatter strip, a so-called planner strip. Between the road and the sidewalk. But we're annoying on these, that what I'm proposing is. We don't need to have the planner strips down there. Think about what they envisioned. They gave us a picture of another development. There's very similar, and we've had others. I realize they've been done as PUD, but. In this case, to have another landscape strip to put in there. I would like to see if they can figure some way to not do it that. Uh, not have the detached one.
I, I guess I would just say I'm not sure we, we have to necessarily sort that out tonight. Um. Because I, I think if we just. If we just recommend minimal. Standards to meet. To comply with code, which I, I assume is what, what staff would apply anyway. I, I, I guess I would hesitate to dictate. Precisely what, what's allowed and not allowed without. Carefully reviewing. The code. Since this is not a PUD and we're not being asked to deviate from the code. Since this is not a PUD and we're not being asked to deviate from the code. What we're being asked to apply the code to this, to the project as it was submitted to us. What are your thoughts, Mr. Chair?
Yeah, I, I agree. The, if, if it is going to be a drive, then staff's going to have to work with the applicant on sorting out how the driveway lays out. Or I mean, I'm sorry, the sidewalks.
Private street. Private street. Yeah, if it was a driveway, then we, that is not an issue.
Agreed, but I think that opens up additional issues. There, there's a whole slew of code sections that involve common drivers and how long they can be and how they have to circle. And we haven't addressed any of those. So if we were going to say that these are common driveways, then they'd have to meet all of those provisions.
Well, do you see if Mr. Smith gets the language to give something to the staff to work with and see what they came up with. Talking to the applicant.
Director, uh, Burnborough, given some, could we have some guidance on as far as a motion, given that we're not? I believe staff asked for more of a, an interpretation of the code. Should our, would you like us to begin with those interpretation? Thoughts and then move to the motion or?
And Chairman, Commissioner Smith, I, I think you could do it either way. I think inherently, potentially the, the way that you frame your recommendation may give us guidance on how we're going to look at code from now on forward. Um, or you could specifically note that we are trying to do a good job in keeping your discussions, uh, um, drafted for the minutes and for the, the decision document, the recommendation.
Okay. Okay, anything else that, or only can attempt in a motion? All right, um, I move that we approve the application. S U D F Y twenty twenty five zero 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 two, we recommend approval to city council um, with the following, uh, additional recommendations. That the roadways that, uh, proceed through the development be categorized as streets under the Garden City Code. As such, um, sidewalks would be required in accordance with code. Um, our recommendation is that those sidewalk requirements be imposed as minimally as possible to give as much effect to the, uh, applicant's intentions for the project as possible. Uh, we also recommend that city council adopt the, uh, adopt staff's definition, um, or approach to determining the appropriate frontage and, uh, and applying that definition accordingly. We would also recommend to council that subsection six, which addresses the parking area and requires, makes certain requirements regarding backing in and out of driveways. That, uh, our recommended interpretation is that that subsection does not apply to garages and private driveways. That that is meant to apply to, uh, multi, multi parking spots. Suppose you could say parking lot, but I, I don't want to limit it to just parking lots, but, um, areas that have multiple spaces and are attempting to move traffic in a circular direction, which would not in context applying in this situation.
I have a motion from Commissioner Smith. Do I have a second?
I'll say it.
I have a second from Commissioner Brown, uh, further deliber- deliberation on this matter. Hearing none, we'll take it to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Who knows, the ayes have it. This matter will now go before city council. Thank you again for your time. We appreciate it. So we'll call the meeting adjourned. Thank you.